All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Conley. I'll be presiding over the workshop today, August 7, 2023. First, I'll call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Okay, yes, sir. Mayor Conley?
Here.
All right, Mayor Preston Glover has let us know she will not be attending this evening. Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
And Councilmember Bell has let us know that he will not be attending this evening as well. Mayor Conley, you have a question?
Thank you very much. Now, on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes.
You can approve.
Second.
All right. Motion to make by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. As the papers say, hi.
Hi.
Those opposed, say nay.
Question passes, four zero.
Jump right into business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this evening, we're going to start the first of a series of presentations about capital projects for the city. The intent of these presentations is to really to lay out the specific, significant capital needs that the city will face in the next five years. That as we go to bring these projects to development, we'll have more in-depth discussion. But the intent of this, these presentations is really to show the council what the capital needs of the city are. So tonight, we're going to focus on public works. We're going to focus on stormwater engineering and projects around road resurfacing and reconstruction. And so with that, I think I'm going to call forward Kevin Mulligan, who's going to kick us off with public works.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. As the city manager indicated, this is, we're going to see the five-year plan for public works, capital projects, and in particular focusing on the public works site. So the first slide, there's 10 capital projects here listed, about $20 million worth. The main one is really the stormwater pipe replacement that's underway at the public works site, but we'll be going through each of these with a individual slide on the page. Again, no FIP projects. One thing you'll notice certainly as the departments present over the next few months is that they present their capital projects, a number of building and site projects. And we'll show you ours as well. So just sort of highlighting buildings that were built 50 years ago may not be perfectly meeting the needs of the city as we...
When you say no FIP projects, is...
The FIP projects are not listed in this.
Okay, and that's because they're funded in different...
That's right. Yeah. All right, so again, we'll get into the particulars of each of those projects. The public works stormwater replacement, again, replacement of the 84-inch stormwater pipe. And you see, this is the pipe we're replacing. So moving quickly on this, the project was approved last summer, design contract awarded in late 2022. The design of Phase 1, which is 1,300 feet, was completed in July, put out to bid. We are receiving bids August 23 with the award council October 23, and the construction start in winter of '23. So we expect this project to be, it is ARPA-funded, approximately $10 million. We're replacing with an eight-by-eight reinforced concrete box that's similar to what we did at Town Creek Culvert. So this is a miniature Town Creek Culvert. So again, Phase 1 is out to bid with construction started to start later this year. There was a stabilization of this, of this pipe that was done, the entire pipe, 2,000 feet, and that was completed several weeks ago.
I have a question there. So it's being replaced with a concrete box, but the Town Creek Culvert is largely open. This won't be open. Will it have any new open areas or...
No. I mean, so this is all underneath the public works site. So here, it discharges on the other side of this railroad track to a ditch. So that's the open part of this, but this is all underneath the public works site.
And so will it be a concrete underneath instead of the pipe?
It will be a concrete box. That's right.
It's a box all the way through.
All the way through.
Can you point out roughly where the two phases are in terms of the length?
So Phase 1 starts here and goes to approximately here. And then this will be Phase 2. And then underneath the railroad, so we eliminated, we look to avoid dealing with the railroad in Phase 1 with ARPA funds just because of the time requirements in dealing with the railroad. A lot of things need to be signed, a lot of review. ARPA funds, they need to be expended by a certain period of time. We're concerned we wouldn't be able to do that if we involved the railroad. So going underneath the railroad would be the third phase.
Okay, thanks.
All right. As we look at a facility, and a number of these projects are going to be on this facility, this is what we needed to do. Again, we see that the public works pipe project, there's a number of significant construction projects on our site. All right, obviously, the stormwater pipe is the top priority. Everything else is scheduled around that, and then I'll speak to that as we get to those. But we have identified sequencing of the projects that, where we don't have multiple construction crews on top of each other and where we're not impacting new construction, right? We finish a project and then we rip it up with the next project. So, and we also need to be able to have all the departments be able to perform their daily duties, right? So... So one of the first projects, fleet maintenance expansion. In the last 10 years, our vehicle numbers, as well as our vehicle size, has increased, putting more stress on our ability to service our vehicles and, in particular, service our transit buses. They are competing with our solid waste vehicles, competing with our fire trucks and other heavy equipment vehicles for the same space. So the expansion of our fleet building, funded primarily through the CARES Act, will provide more capacity to perform the timely maintenance and the planning and design for this. You'll see, this project is estimated to be about 1.3 million. Planning and design over the next couple of years, construction no sooner than the completion of Phase 1, but we're looking at '25, '26.
Phase 1 of the...
I'm sorry, Phase 1 of the stormwater pipe, right? That's going to pass in front of this. So we can't start construction until that pipe was, that stormwater pipe is completed. The next project, replacement of fuel tanks, or existing fuel tanks, all city vehicles refuel at the public works site. Our existing tanks are fiberglass reinforced plastic. They have a life of between 20 and 30 years. 30 years is pushing the limit, and we're at approximately 25, 26 years of life with our existing tanks. Our existing tanks are double-walled, right? So there's a monitoring system in between the two tanks to make sure they're not leaking. We would look to install this and increase the size of it from 20,000. We use about 1,000 gallons a day. So to go from 20 days to 30 days of storage. By extending that 10 days, it gives us more flexibility. Typical construction duration for this type of project is three to four months. We expect it to cost about $700,000, and we'll design how we fuel up all of our vehicles during that three to four months, during the time when we get into design. We do have a contract with our fueling vendor that if, should anything ever happen to our, if we lose power, if a storm takes out our fueling station, they need to provide fuel to us on emergency basis. So they would set up shop on our yard. The intent of that is not three, four months. The intent of that is, you know, a week, weeks as opposed to months. Question?
I do have a question. This is far beyond your purview or your authority, but I imagine, I'm interested from an environmental point of view, what happens to these old tanks? Are they just sort of set out to pasture? Are they repurposed? Do, again, it's not your...
So FRP, so I'm not sure what exactly the contractor would do with them, but there's a high likelihood that they would dispose of them and try to recycle them. So there'd be some money in that for the contractor.
Recycle, okay. I mean, the word is like, these are going to be recycled.
All right, so that's our, again, our fuel tank, a design of that in '26 as we get closer to that 30-year, and construction in '27. Sticking with fleet, fleet emergency generator, we do not have a generator for fleet. So our fleet services shop. If we lose power, we're out of service there, as well as our fuel monitoring sta, our fuel supply station. So this is a whole-house generator. This is funded, approximate cost of $250,000, and we're looking to get underway this year. We would design it and then order it this year. Our generators and transfer switches currently taking about 12 to 18 months to show up that we've seen over the last couple of years. So... Next project, our public works yard. So I, this is when our facility was built, and that is actually the last time. We have original asphalt down there. So asphalt typically a life of about 20, 15 to 25 years. So we are way beyond that.
They call that vintage now.
What's that?
They call that vintage.
Vintage, that's right.
Yes, this might not be vintage.
So certainly immediate need to resurface our public works yard with concrete in certain areas, asphalt in others. We have replaced some of the concrete that's over the years. Certainly, you see that bottom picture, the asphalt has settled and broken. It rains, it will pond there if it's wintertime, right? It's susceptible to ice. So overall, really just unsafe conditions for personnel and equipment. We will phase this, this is actually broken up into five phases. As we do a particular project, we'll come in after that. So one good part of that, the stormwater project takes up about a phase and a half. So, but it says four-year phasing plan. So fiscal year '25, '26, '27, '28 will go to different geographical areas on-site, and all funds would, general stormwater, solid waste, and transit would pay into this. Any questions on that? So on to some of our building projects. And again, like I said, so there'll be multiple departments presenting over the next few months, and you'll see some repetition here with some building needs. This picture, that is the room where up to 43 people meet to discuss assignments, plan work activities, do safety training. I'll say this, during the pandemic, we could not meet because we could not provide that safe meeting space. So like I said, you see numerous building projects, we're a growing city, and the current, this current facility is not adequate to meet our needs as, obviously, the personnel hired to perform the important duties of street maintenance and stormwater just need to make sure that their facilities are attended to. So while this project is urgent, excuse me, it needs to be phased in so that we're, again, we're fitting everything on-site. $3 million, approximately unfunded, not funded as of yet. So scheduled fiscal year '26 through '28, general fund in stormwater would be the source of funding. Solid waste office renovations, this is our main admin building, our assembly room, a bit larger than our streets meeting room, is the solid waste area, although this is a bit of a communal office. It shares space with other divisions. That assembly room has sort of been the makeshift office space for the last 30 years for solid waste. It's also the department lunchroom, as well as a pass-through of other divisions. So renovation of this area to provide better training resources, better meeting areas, improved communications, response time, and just overall work efficiencies. This project, we could renovate this big room for less than $1 million. And again, the '26 through '28 is the schedule, currently unfunded. Source of funds would be the solid waste fund. Any questions on that? All right, Homestead Cemetery. This project, this is the replacement of the existing equipment shelter with a maintenance building. We've probably talked about this project a couple of times over the years. You probably lose three to four man-hours a day in the loading and unloading of equipment, travel back and forth to the Homestead Cemetery. We did at one time leave our equipment overnight. It was borrowed a couple of times, and our good friends at PV helped to borrow or return equipment to us. So we bring it back to our site to secure the equipment. So the building would house equipment and provide a meeting room. We would locate, the idea would be to locate the facility to the nearest water and sewer utilities. Again, project costs about $775,000, partially funded, look for design to start as early as this fiscal year with construction in '26. Homestead is the city's main cemetery. A note on that, we are currently expanding the cemetery into this area where that dot is. We're expanding, putting 1,200, opening up 1,200 graves. So the city probably has about 20 years more left of Homestead. And so the future parcels of north and southwest of that will allow for 5,000 more grave sites. Typically, when we look at a cemetery, we look at a 50-year life. To provide a 50-year window, we will need to identify approximately a 60-acre site looking forward. Any questions on that?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And you're familiar, you probably know what I'm going to ask. At one point, the plan was to locate this maintenance and repair facility right behind the homes in River Hills.
Right, and this area is where, historically, it has been shown, I think 2011, we showed that to council a couple of times, that's been shown, but we have not identified that final placement for where that building would go. But that was what was shown previously.
I just want to say, I mean, there are, you know, hundreds of acres there, and I would just like to say really strongly that to place this maintenance facility where heavy equipment's going to be going in and out, and there's going to be people with all of that available space to place this right behind people's homes in River Hills, I would strongly advocate for not putting it there.
Okay. And certainly, we can look at that. I'd say the one reason we gravitated this area is water and sewer right there. Coming over here, you'd have an extension, you'd need to pipe to the water and sewer, which would just raise the cost significantly.
The water and sewer is there because that's where the people are.
That's right.
That, again, there are hundreds of acres, hundreds of acres there, and to put this major maintenance facility, you know, behind people's homes in their backyards...
I'd say that, you know, the location of it is not finalized, but there isn't anticipated to be a lot of noise with this, right? We've been moving equipment out and moving it back at the end of the day. You're not talking about a, we're not talking about a public works site, right? Where we're refueling, but certainly, that's a conversation we can have as to where it goes.
I would definitely want that conversation to take place. And again, you say there's not that much noise, but when you're living somewhere, you know, and that's your home, and that's your...
Absolutely.
You know, your everything, where you come for your respite at the end of the day, and where you're with your children trying to have a calm, quiet life, it's just not the place for this kind of facility. My second question is, has to do with those new, the expansion there onto that part, again, right behind River Hills. Residents who live on River Chase had this idea, and I think it's a really good idea, to use flat grave markers instead of the tombstones.
So, yeah, they do that across the street. We do not have that as our policy, but certainly could look into that. That would be a fundamental shift and would make life a lot easier for the maintenance of a cemetery, but we can look into that. That's something that council wants to enact or change in our cemetery ordinance. Be happy to move forward with that.
As I say, it was an idea that the residents had just because it just preserves kind of the integrity of that area, and it does look really nice when you look at Pinewood. But again, those are questions for the cemetery professionals, for you guys, the professionals. I pass along as an idea, whereas the other one is something I feel very strongly about.
Sure, sure. So you're thinking as we move back to this area here?
Mm-hmm. Right.
All right. Any other questions on Homestead and the future of cemeteries in the city? All right. Downtown commercial solid waste. As you know, just an update on this, the city is getting involved in a collection of commercial solid waste. We're hiring a solid waste hauling company to perform these duties. We put out RFP, received the RFP proposals about a week and a half ago. More to come on that. We're currently doing some financial analysis, modeling, and we will provide a more substantive update at the September workshop.
Now, Kevin, just to clarify the phrase... Council, the project cost for this is associated with the acquisition of equipment.
That's it, that's it. So, yeah, this capital project is for the associated equipment for some of the additional services that staff would be doing, the new proposed app. This $190,000 is two pickup trucks and a street sweeper. All right, the, that would be purchased, capital out of the solid waste fund, and then paid back over time from the rates, from the rate payers. All right?
Because if I may, Kevin, just a quick question. The large, with the large equipment, it's going to be funded by the vendor, it's going to be provided by the vendor.
That's correct.
They're going to have their own stuff.
So Company X will bring their front loaders, their rear loaders, whatever vehicles they're using to collect the commercial solid waste.
Thanks.
And sanitation rates are just something that we're going to have to talk about quite a bit over the next year anyway, right?
That's correct.
A, there's the rates at this level, but there's also just the rates across the system, which are five, seven years old, correct?
We have not raised those rates, and I think we're heading into our sixth year. And just some brief analysis of that is, maybe as you would expect, we don't anticipate we'll be able to hold at that current $16 a month.
It is important to point out that next month, the council will receive a presentation about downtown commercial service, which will be the very, it will be the first time that we'll take a look at what that service might look like and what the cost might look like.
That's project number 10, provided, is our Gateway Siders project. We first talked about this back in March of '22. We brought this project with a proposed cost of $150,000. The design's been completed, it is out to bid with bids due later this week. There were some additional site requirements, so we have, we wanted to move this back, and we need to put this on about eight feet of soil to raise it up. It's a little bit of a bowl in that area. So, and we've seen certainly just about every project, a recent escalation in material and labor prices. So we're projecting this, and we'll know more later this week, we're projecting this to be about $250,000. Again, bids are due later this week. Any questions on...
Everything lights up at the top dome?
We would have, we would have lights shining on the dome. The idea is to have...
I'm just looking at the dark picture.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So that has been changed.
Oh, okay.
So we would shine lights on the, in fact, there was a comment because of this.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we're putting a dome in there, we need to shine a light on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So Kevin, did you say it was going to be elevated?
So really, what's going on, this is, so there's a bit of a bowl here, and it's really going to, it's going to reflect this, but we need to raise that ground, fill in that bowl.
Okay, so the whole thing won't be raised. And then the light, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We just, we didn't want it to be 15 feet off of the curb line, so it's kind of centered in that area, and that's some site improvement work. And we'll look at, we'll know more when we get the cost in, and we'll look at, one, how much does it cost, and what are some alternatives to performing this project?
And is it planned to have the lights shining upward, again, from a light pollution perspective?
Shining at the sign.
Shining at the sign, but not upward.
Backlit as well as shining at the sign, not up near.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That is, I'll turn it over.
Great, now we'll turn it over to Lisa, here from engineering. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
I wanted to have another question, I'm sorry.
Oops.
Kevin, the initial, the pipes that you discussed, and it was going under the railroad tracks, will that affect the residents in that area at all?
Should not affect the residents. So there is a section downstream of the railroad where that pipe has also deteriorated, former Pitt Street. And we'll need to look at that culvert there, and we'll bring more information back on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
So, we're going to jump into engineering. There are 19 projects with over $88 million worth of funding, and then I will move on into stormwater, which is eight projects with over $57 million worth of funding. So I'm not going to delay. I will mention, though, as an overall scheme with the presentation, that you will see a lot of shifting of projects from the last CIP, as well as new projects that we've identified. The reasons for this is, the good news is, we've been very successful at winning some grants and some federal earmarks to fund some projects and change some of our priorities. But as you're aware, we've had considerable price escalation over the last few years. Our infrastructure is either deteriorating faster or slower than expected in some cases, so that changes our priorities a little bit. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that the capital division is woefully understaffed. We have two vacancies out of four positions and have for quite a while now, so... The order of the projects I'm going to go through is based on what year they're funded in. And then there are several annual projects, and I'll tackle those first. So... So our pavement management program funds our annual contracts for street maintenance, preservation, and rehabilitation. We apply certain treatments with the goal of trying to maintain a PCI of 73. Remember, PCI is the pavement condition index. Total cost, five-year cost, $17.7 million. It's funded annually at about $2.9 to $3.1 million, depending on the year. Just a note, the current funding level does not support achieving that average PCI of 73. Close, but not there yet, so... Traffic safety initiatives, this is also an annual fund. As in 2018, the city initiated the traffic safety task force as a result of being listed as number one in the state for most reported car crashes in municipalities with a population greater than 10,000. As a result, we developed this task force. It's been very successful as we have now moved to number five in the state. Some of the key projects, we have installed over 13 different locations, delineators in different locations. We've also been able to install traffic calming devices in approximately 12 different neighborhoods, and the lighting improvements along Memorial from the Tar River to Granville Boulevard, some of the more significant projects.
With traffic calming, though, that's really related to an analysis of the danger of the actual safety of the streets, or are they largely people calling us and saying, we think people are driving too fast on our street?
So that's how they're initiated usually, is through citizen complaints. So that's how they're initiated usually, is through citizen complaint. Sometimes PD will bring it to our attention if they have a particular issue with enforcement. But they do have to meet the policy criteria, and they have to.
Those policies, those criteria are all speed-based. They're not.
They are.
There's no accident base to that. Now, I mean, at least the ones I've seen, they're either checked up or down based on how fast were people going. It's not like we're looking at it and saying, yes, there've been three accidents here in the last 10 years, and that.
Correct, correct. Because it's all about the traffic calming and perception of pedestrians and bicycle activities in the neighborhood.
Yes, it's, I understand why it's here under traffic safety initiatives, but it doesn't really strike me as having the same impact on safety as some of these other parts of it.
Right.
I would like to say that to your point, that we've already seen where we had speed books installed in River Hills. People would come down that hill, and they would spin out, and they would hit other cars. So already, again, it's not quantitative, it's more anecdotal, but I can see how they make a difference.
Plus, it's not part of the analysis, is my point.
Right.
There is no part of that analysis that is, is this a safe street? It's just, are people driving fast on it? That's the only way we decide to put in traffic.
Slowest speeds is sort of the facto safer.
I don't think you have numbers for that.
Okay, Lake Ellsworth pipe replacement. So Lake Ellsworth is a private lake. However, both the outlet and the overflow pipes cross under Ellsworth Drive, which is a city-maintained road. As you can see from the picture in the bottom left, the overflow pipes have been undercut and are resting out. We plan to initiate design and install new pipes with the headwalls in this fiscal year. So this project is funded.
Where were you like six months ago or so? Didn't we have this discussion recently?
Different lake.
I asked the same question.
Those pipes don't go under a city-maintained road, unfortunately.
That's Glenwood, isn't it?
Right, Glenwood, yes. I asked the same question.
East Fourth Street rehabilitation. If you remember, this was a project we initially scoped as reconstruction. Until funding is available for this large-scale project, staff is moving forward with rehab and/or preservation treatments. This should give us an additional five to seven years of life. We are, intend to incorporate this project into our annual pavement management contracts this year.
So, sorry, Lisa, before you move on, that Fourth Street just continues to be a very big issue in that university, in the university community, and of course, for people who drive it. And I know that we've kind of shifted, shifted gears several times on that. So this work, I know, but a large part or a section has just recently had, been resurfaced, which is wonderful, and it looks wonderful, looks great. But all this that's taken place will only provide five or seven more years, and then we're going to kind of be facing this need again, especially that concrete part, and we're going to have to dig it up and redo everything.
Correct.
So are we wise to get the necessary complete reconstruction into conversation, into a funding, a sort of a funding siphon, funding route before those five to seven years are up?
That's the purpose of this presentation, is to begin to talk about what are projects that are important for the council to think about as we begin to discuss next year's budget. So that's the reason that that's on this list.
Okay, got it. And this is how we plan to help immediately with the, with the current contracts that we have annually. What I will say is, moving forward, you'll see there are probably, what, four or five more reconstruction projects that we've also identified through this, so. Community Center Pathway. So this project was recently developed to encourage safe pedestrian movements by routing citizens to the intersection of Memorial Drive and Third Street. The improvements will utilize an existing unimproved street right-of-way between Third and Fourth for a 10, and will install a 10-foot-wide asphalt multi-use path. The project also includes sidewalk extension and crossing a Fourth Street with new sidewalk on the south side of Third Street. Road lighting on wood poles along the 10-foot asphalt path also.
Can you point out apps on this, Lisa, so the council will be aware of that?
Yes, yes. So this is apps right here?
And our new, the general location of the new community pool.
Yes, which is.
Right there.
Right, and right behind it?
No, it's right to the side. Where the tennis courts are, see the tennis courts?
Yes, over here.
Right.
And so this will actually continue that sidewalk, provide a crossing, add sidewalk. This is the 10-foot asphalt path with sidewalk on Third, to get them to Third and Memorial.
I have a question.
Okay.
I know you may have some questions, too. When it gets to Memorial, what happens?
There's a crosswalk there. There are pedestrian facilities there to get them across the street.
At Third Street?
At Third Street and Memorial.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. This one, I will say, is not funded. Arts District Streetscape. This, the city entered into a development agreement that includes a commitment by the city to construct streetscape improvements along West Eighth Street, Washington Street, and West Ninth Street. The scope includes standard streetscape elements that are identified on the slide at a cost of $875,000. This is funded through a Rural Transformation Grant. I will note that right now, the project is being re-scrept due to restrictions on the grant funding that we were recently made aware of, as well as delays and progress by the private partners, so. North-South Connector. This will connect Town Commons to River Park North via North Green Street and Mumford Road. It'll provide both bicycle and pedestrian facilities, as seen in the photograph here, through a road diet on Green Street. This is funded. This is funded through a federal earmark and the city's cost share. We have started preliminary meetings with Division Two, NC Division Two, or NC DOT, sorry, Division Two, and hope to have an RFQ advertised this fiscal year.
Lisa, a quick question.
Love that, love this idea. At one point, the idea was going to be a cantilevered bridge, and now it, that's, looks like that's.
That is not going to happen for the funding that we have available, so.
Now, looking at what, what you refer to as a road diet, is this, you know, super safe? We're not going to have, you know, like, is that, are we going to have really sturdy walls, just, just to make sure?
We are. The design hasn't been complete yet, and we certainly have to do some structural analysis of the bridge, about what loadings we can put on the bridge, what DOT would approve. But as you can see right there, those are Jersey barriers, so they're concrete, reinforced concrete walls. But yes, the idea is that it'd be something substantial that would stop a car.
Okay, good. That's, that's really exciting to see.
And also, I realize that we're a long way away from this, but to the extent possible, you know, vertical elements, even if they're not struck, not going to stop cars, right, but prevent, you know, that, you know, break the line of sight, you know, ameliorate noise, you know, the sort of thing that make you, somebody standing in that, in the pedestrian facility, you know, less and less, you know, conscious of that it being a road next, right? But, yeah. In a perfect world, you know, it'd be like, you know, a 12-foot-tall wall with, you know, greenery and stuff, and I realize, you know, that that's a, we're a ways away from that. But, you know, to the extent that there, it is possible to put any sort of vertical element to it that, you know, delineates that, hey, you know, you're over here, you 're on the walkway, that's where the cars are over there.
Right, right. I will say, too, there are other elements that we'll investigate, reduce speed, that all come along with putting pedestrians and bicycles on the roadway.
And the joggers, the joggers cannot go that fast. I've seen joggers, and they run right along, they pay no attention.
This one should be quick. Everybody should know where we're at with the build grant.
I don't think you've got to break ground on that.
I was just going to mention, you know, design is complete. The groundbreaking ceremony was August 3rd. Construction contracts have been executed, and we anticipate the notice to proceed for August 14th, so.
I still think, like, thinking about the numbers, we got $15 million, and somehow we just came up with the rest, I guess.
We have 18.4 now. 18.4, but still a lot to come up with.
I agree, it's like the difference, like, when we went up to DC, I mean, what was it, like, 20-some million dollars?
24 initially.
24 initially, and it's just the cost, that's why it's a quick.
It's unbelievable.
And I appreciate how a full description of how, of that entire story was in the program at the, at the meeting, didn't you?
We only had half a page, so.
You want the whole story? Come back to the office, it's a long one.
And Town Common Connector, that's where you go from downtown to the Town Common?
Town Common Connector, yes, that's the one that follows Town Creek Culvert?
Yes.
From Town Common to Fifth.
Okay, thanks.
I get the TCCs mixed up.
Go back, can you go back? One more.
One more?
Yeah. So will that, what would the lanes look like on Green Street?
They haven't been designed yet, but what we envision, it would be one lane in each direction, or one lane at least moving north. And if we can accommodate, what this picture shows is that we're accommodating bicycles and pedestrians on the same side, that would be the least expensive option, and that would be the goal, is to accommodate.
Oh, I'm all for that.
That would leave two lanes on the other side, but just one lane going north.
Perfect, okay.
All right. Mast arm replacements. I think we've talked about this one for a while as well. There are, or were, 11 intersections that have signals in them in the downtown area. They are all past their useful life and require removal or replacement. So with that, the three circles, they're green, those are either being designed currently and will be incorporated into build or been addressed with other Capitol projects. So those four locations have been taken care of. What remains, though, is the design of Fifth and, or I'm sorry, the design of Fifth and Washington, and which is the yellow box, this box. The four red Xs are ones that we have identified can actually be decommissioned and removed. So we would like to move forward with that, as well as the orange circles with the Xs in them. Those are signals that have been removed, but the foundations are still in place. So we would like to go ahead and remove those foundations as well when we remove the signals.
Lisa, question, another question for you. Is it something we thought about or that we would want to do? I know in many big cities, especially when they want to have a certain kind of field, they'll use those traffic lights that are sort of almost pedestrian-level, you know, where they're right there. I, I wonder, is that something we would ever want to consider doing?
We could potentially, if, if we need them, but right now, the six that we've identified with the Xs aren't needed in the uptown area to move traffic and provide for pedestrians. So those will become four-way stops.
Okay.
Or two-way.
But then the other, okay, the other places, having those sort of curbside stoplights is not necessarily what we would want to do?
Well, we've already installed four of them.
Oh.
So it's only the one left, that would be.
Never mind. Never mind.
I think you said it, but there are places there, there's literally like a piece of concrete with a bunch of huge screws sticking up out of the ground, and in some places, wires.
Yes.
And those are getting, you're getting rid of.
Yes, those would be the ones with the circle with the X through them, yeah.
That, well, that happened, just curiosity, by December?
Probably not. We haven't issued the RFQ yet for it, so. Pedestrian signal for 10th and Anderson. I'm sure if you have tramped this corridor regularly, you are familiar with the continuous stream of pedestrians with minimal breaks that allow vehicular travel. So what this does, the installation of pedestrian signal, will provide for safe pedestrian movements while moving vehicular traffic. So it acts as a traffic light, basically. Pedestrian hits the button, it waits, it turns the vehicle's side red, gives the pedestrians a green light, gives them so much time to get across, and then it flips it back to the vehicular movement. And what it does is it staggers those pedestrian crossings, so you can get both to move efficiently in the same area. They're referred to as hawk beacons sometimes, so you may have heard of those. It's about $200,000, and we hope to do this in FY '25.
FY '25, that, for somebody miming what date that start, what, what date?
That would be next fiscal year, so July 1st.
July 1st to '24.
'25.
Of '24.
'24, I'm sorry.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
But keep in mind, this one is not funded either.
Yeah, I was just saying, when would the first time, when was the earliest that you could ask us for money on that? There's a lot of people that talk about that, and they haven't talked about it, obviously, in the last 60 days, but I think sometime starting in about 10 days, they're going to start asking about it again.
Right.
It seems like a number we might be able to, you know, address earlier. I don't know, I'm just saying. It'd be cool to see a request for that sooner than like.
Okay, we can take a look at it, certainly. Like I said, with staffing, I would have to, it's a juggling act, so we would have to push something out to get, but if this one's.
All the things you've talked about, that's the thing that seems to really like, yeah.
Right, right. Okay. 10th Street Safety Improvements. So through the Granville Area NPO, we completed a pedestrian crossing feasibility study along 10th Street between the Overpass and Evans, as you see the red box in the top picture. There were staged recommendations as a part of this study based on the development along 10th Street and adjacent blocks. So with the build, specifically the Arts District Trail, ending, will actually end right here at the Public Art right there, as well as Intersect East getting started, the first stage is really to take steps to protect pedestrians and bicyclists by discouraging mid-block crossings here. So what this project is, is actually installing what's called an LPI at 10th and Evans, which is a leading pedestrian interval. It gives them a few minutes to get across the street before the phases start for vehicular traffic, so they get a head start. It installs fencing on the existing median right here as a physical barrier. Also improved lighting and signage under the overpass to make it safer there for pedestrians to cross.
So Lisa, this is just between where the, the overpass ends and then that, because that intersection at Evans is really already really well set up with the.
It is.
Quick crossing and, if I understand correctly, what this is going to do is enhance that by having a more, I guess, engaged kind of lighting system.
Right, right. So what happens is when somebody pushes the button, right, a pedestrian pushes the button, the leading pedestrian interval, it stops traffic in all phases for a few seconds to give the pedestrian the opportunity to move into the crosswalk so that people can see them. So it'll enhance that crossing.
Because that's, that, that crossing, again, I, I don't know other people's experiences, but I run over there, and my experience is that there's a whole lot about that intersection that is already working well, and it's, and it's attractive, you know, sort of waiting for Intersect East to get started, but, so that's, that's, again, good news, yeah.
Pavement Condition Survey. So this is the study, we try and complete it every five years. This is, we contract this work out for a consultant to drive every lane mile within the city limits and, that are maintained by the city, and they identify a PCI or pavement condition index. This study is critical for us to be able to forecast and estimate the roads that we're going to tackle in our pavement management program. It is funded $2,000, or $200,000 in FY '25, so. South Green Street Reconstruction. This road is in very poor condition with an average PCI of 12. By '26, or by 2026, the PCI will be 1.6 on this road. It is in dire need of reconstruction. It is funded, and we envision on doing that FY '25 to '26. Reed Street. Same thing, very poor condition, average PCI rating of 12.5. Projected PCI will be 4.6 by '25. So we envision, or we would like to start this in FY '25 and complete it in FY '26, but it is only partially funded.
Lisa, one more question for you. When we do these street reconstructions, are we doing? When we do these street reconstructions, are we doing the the bike lanes on the sides and sort of trying to route?
If we have room. So with these projects, we don't typically buy right-of-way, it's the right-of-way we have, especially in the downtown area. And so, but if the road is wide enough and it can accommodate them safely, then we would add dedicated bike lanes, so. Signal Progression Study. You guys may be familiar with these. It basically is a study of the signals within a corridor. It makes them more efficient, it makes the timing sync up with the idea that if you're going the speed limit and you don't have any obstructions or obstacles, you would be able to get through all of the lights. It is a huge safety measure in that it decreases or reduces delays and stops by up to 40%, which obviously reduces the opportunity for rear-end accidents. It also reduces idling. There are currently five corridors that we study on a regular basis. They're listed here for you. We have cycled through them one time. Fire Tower Road was the last one, and the timings were just installed this month. So hopefully you'll see an improvement there. The goal is, we would start with Greenville Boulevard again in '25 and tackle it every other year, moving forward, a different corridor.
Can you explain how that's actually done?
Probably not. That's why we hire consultants, but they, I could certainly get back to you. I would, I would like to include Rick in that conversation, our traffic engineer.
Because I was wondering if it could be a cameraman that has an algorithm that tracks the traffic flow and reconfigures the lights.
Chat GPT could do it, yes.
I'm just, you know, because sometimes it's like they're designed this just to make it some pain in the rear end.
Right.
And other times you go, you can zip through there like it's nothing. I'm interested in how I get it.
I'll get back up with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Quail Hollow Reconstruction. Again, very low PCI of 38. Projected PCI will be 17 by FY '27. Inadequate subgrade drainage, which causes the curb to drop, causes the road to deteriorate faster than it should. Again, this one is partially funded. The goal is to address it in FY '26, '27. The Engineering Building. Since 2019, we've added 14 positions to engineering to make it a total of 38 positions. We are excited and thrilled with that. It helps us accomplish things more efficiently and sooner rather than later for our citizens. But as you can imagine, that puts a huge demand on infrastructure in our building. So we are in the process of kind of splitting up, and half of us will move to the second floor of the municipal building in an effort to give some of, some of the engineers a home that they don't have, an office space that they don't have right now. This does, it makes it difficult for quick and immediate collaboration efforts. It obviously reduces our efficiencies. And so this CIP is for a new building for engineering, a standalone building, to the tune of $13.3 million, so. That would include, like I say here, 36 offices or workstations, 12,000 square feet of conditioned or unconditioned space, six bays for equipment, and then parking for both employees and city vehicles. I will note, that price does not include acquisition of property, so. Harmony Street Reconstruction. Similar to the others, PCI rating of 33, projected to be 0 by '28. So this kind of shows you the difference in those deterioration curves that we try and build with historic information, and that's why the pavement condition studies are so, so important, so that we can continue to build on those. So this one is partially funded. We would hope to address this in FY '27, '28. Ford Street Reconstruction, PCI of 33, 0 by 29. This one also has failing stormwater drainage pipes underneath, which make it more important to, or a higher priority, I guess, for us, and we hope to address this in FY '27, '28, but this is not funded.
Lisa, with Ford Street. Now, that is a very residential area. It seems like that's a place where a street diet, you know, wider lanes for for bikes, and I don't think there's sidewalks over there.
I don't, I don't think there's sidewalks either, and I don't know, do you know how wide it is, Kevin?
I would say 28 feet.
So we couldn't get protected bike lanes in that area.
Even though it's super residential, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Not protected now, because there's just not enough width of the asphalt, so.
And by protected, that means where you've got like ballards or something?
No, just a separate lane, separate four or five-foot lane just for bicycles.
Uh huh, okay.
Which is what we try and do if we're doing restriping or resurfacing, we try and accommodate that if we have enough asphalt width. All right, on to stormwater. Like I said, if there are eight projects totaling about $57 million, this list is a little more fluid because of the grants we have been able to get, but I will just jump in. Stormwater Improvement Program, this is our annual contract, similar to our pavement management program. This addresses, you know, any of the 229 miles of drainage pipe that Public Works tries to maintain on a rep annual basis, and it either repairs or it replaces, depending on what the need is. Sometimes we are able to do pipelining or install collars to salvage the existing pipe to reduce costs, but this is funded annually at 1.5 to 1.8 million a year. Streambank Stabilization Program, this is another annual program to address erosion along streambanks that can significantly impact water quality, property values, and the safety of the citizens. This program provides up to 100% funding for the costs associated with streambank measures on private property if the project meets certain conditions. And this, it stabilizes the bank, provides brake controls, filtrax living walls, or plants vegetation in order to stabilize it, and that's funded at $100,000 per year. This project in particular exceeds the parameters of the Streambank Stabilization Program. Cedar Streambank Stabilization has severe bank erosion, causing loss of property to over 28 residents and threatening multiple private improvements. This will stabilize 1,400 linear feet of streambank in Reedy Branch from 14th Street to J.C. Park. So it is funded. Of note is the need of 100% participation from residents on right-of-entry and easement acquisitions. So we are facing some challenges there with some residents, and I think we're going to be talking in the future about how to move forward with this project. But the goal is to begin this project this year. So design should be complete this year. Hopefully, we'll issue construction documents.
In some of previous presentations, we've seen scenes where there's sort of like steps out from it. I mean, it's not hardened, it's, you know, it's.
Benching.
Landscaped in a way that the bank, as the stream ride rises, it widens and has more room, slows down.
Right, right.
And doesn't incise into the, is that the sort of thing? I realize it's not specifically here, but.
Not in this particular location due to the proximity of private property.
Okay.
Directly adjacent and the private improvements. We do have other projects that do provide, the goal is to provide access to the floodplain again, so there's floodplain benching that'll occur along the stream.
So what kind of design would be happening here?
This would be like in this area, you could use filtrax or socks.
And what's filtrax?
It's like, Daryl might be able to describe it the best, but it's.
A tube sock filled with dirt and mulch that you can plant and grow trees directly through, so you can get a green living wall.
The goal is to, to have it ultimately be a vegetative.
Yes, yes.
It is a method of hard armoring without it being quite so hard, and it's green and living, and it will continue on even when the sock deteriorates away.
I know this has been an issue for a long time, so it's good news to hear that it's going to begin.
Well, there, there is some work to be done before.
Yeah.
Some, and some conversations with the council related to.
Okay. All right. Corey Road Drainage Improvements. The tailwater conditions upstream of Corey Road causes Trafalgar Drive culverts to only provide a two-year level of service. I'll have some pictures in the next slide that will kind of show you what we mean by a two-year level of service. And in the event of a flood, there are 24 homes back there that are left with no alternative route to or from their home. This is the first step in trying to resolve that issue. This does not fix that problem, but this has to take place before we can address the Trafalgar Drive culverts. This would be a regional facility. It's an eight-acre detention pond. On the plan, we show it in three different ponds. It could be all one. We haven't gone through the design of this yet. It is funded. We are pending the grant agreement. We had requested 7.5 million. We did only receive $5 million. So the city through its Stormwater Utility Fund will have to pick up the cost share in that one. St. Andrews Streambank Stabilization. This project will provide stream restoration for 3,200 linear feet. This one includes some benching, Councilmember Smiley, that you had mentioned, but also gavine walls, brake control, and natural vegetation where we can use it. This stream runs parallel with St. Andrews from Greenville Boulevard to Fair Lane, and it's deeply incised with exposed sewer lines. Erosion also threatens several private improvements. This one, we did also receive a grant, a brick grant. We were awarded $3.4 million to help offset the $11.6 million. East Fire Tower Drainage Improvements. This project, we have applied for a brick grant for. This year, we have not heard about the results of that application yet, but there are flood impacts to 84 residents along Treetop Circle, East Fire Tower Road, and Summer Haven Drive. This project, 29 properties will be removed from the 25-year floodplain, 26 properties will be removed from the 100-year floodplain. So there's some substantial improvements that this project would make. It installs twin 7-by-14 RCBCs on East Fire Tower Road, or at least that's the preliminary analysis, and creates five thou, almost a mile of floodplain benching to the tune of $19.9 million. If we receive the grant award, the grant would be for almost $9.1 million. Watershed Master Plan Update. This plan was completed in 2016. Since then, the land use plan has been updated, new development has occurred, we've had capital projects completed, system upgrades completed. So we need to really update the plan, not only to include those changes, but also current bid prices and estimates for construction. So we use this plan for grant applications, to amend development requirements, and to identify and prioritize our capital projects. So our goal is to do this in '26, which would be a 10-year cycle, and this one is funded. This was the project we added as a result of receiving the Corey Road Grant, Trafalgar Drive. So both the south and north culverts don't, do not meet the design standard of 25 years. Again, 24 homes left with no alternative route at a cost of $2.3 million. We could improve these culverts and provide relief for the citizens in this neighborhood. All right, and that's the summary of the engineering, stormwater. Any questions?
Any questions for Lisa?
How many, how much money in like grants do you think we've received for some of those projects? It seems like there's a lot of it.
There is.
Just a guest amount.
We could bring, we can bring you back that number, Mayor.
I mean, I don't need the exact number, I mean, guess amount.
I'm going to say stormwater, maybe a total of 16 to 18 million.
Oh, oh.
Grants.
Awarded or, I mean, that we've been received, awarded?
Well, I was including the the Fire Tower Road project.
Yeah, if we get the brick grant this year, then that would be about 17 million.
And then an additional, what, 2.5 and about 3.5 in street, street skateboard.
Wow, significant.
Thanks, Lisa.
But it is, while we are fortunate to receive, and I don't mean to be a.
Debbie Downer.
Yeah. While we are fortunate to receive those funds, we have seen significant cost escalation on projects.
Well, I think the projects, when we first started talking about it a few years back, I mean, wasn't it like in the 300 million range or something like that, just for like immediate projects that need to be done, so, yeah.
So they're just going up. So these, these are the first two presentations, Public Works and Engineering. We're going to take a little bit of a break in September. We have a couple of other items to bring to you in the workshop, and then in October, we'll come back to the council and talk about public safety needs of fire and police, and then we'll finish off with a presentation on wrecking parks. And so the idea would be that you'll, the council would hear about capital needs of city, of our city departments, but get it almost completely done by the end of the year. Okay?
Of course.
Great. So we did want to finish this evening with a, just a quick update to the council on where we stand on some ARPA projects. We want to periodically bring you updates, and we felt like it was important to let you know where we stand, so I'm going to turn it over to Byron, and Byron will have that presentation.
And I think you said a brief, right?
Brief, it's brief. It's brief.
Byron is the king of briefs.
Right, Byron.
I do what I can.
That budget presentation, the fastest budget presentation I've ever heard in my life.
Hi, Mr. Debbie Diggs. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a brief, brief presentation about, an update about the American Rescue Plan. Just to remind the council of the timeline for the American Rescue Plan funding that the city has received, the city received about $24.7 million. Back in the summer of 2022, we did bring a funding plan to council during the workshop, and council approved a final plan in April of this year. Oh, and also just to remind the council, the funding for ARPA does have to be encumbered or obligated by the end of 2024 and fully expended by the end of 2026. Quick update on the breakdown as well, about 10 of the 10 million of the $24.7 million is allocated to revenue replacement. This is any sort of general government services that can be provided with the funds, and about 14.7 is restricted for any enumerated uses. These enumerated uses are anything from negative economic impacts, premium pay, or water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Taking a look at the list of projects that council approved in April, almost all of the $10 million is allocated toward the non-federal revenue or match portion of the build grant. There's a small carve-out for the East Fourth Street reconstruction that began. However, once we did see those cost increases and the fact that the build grant did require a little bit more in the match, that is where the funding ended up being allocated. So that is the total of the $10 million, and then the 14.7 is allocated to these other six projects, assistance to nonprofits and small businesses, greenfield terrace improvements, Dream Park renovations, employee premium pay, the Public Works drainage pipe replacement, and the Town Common Bulkhead. And I'll briefly go over a few of these projects. Some of you, or some of them you have heard a little bit earlier today, but we'll keep it pretty brief for you. Also, just kind of taking a look at where we sit expense-wise as of the beginning of this month, so far, we spent about $1.2 million in ARPA funding with another $1.3 million that's been encumbered so far. that's been encumbered so far. So looking at the projects, the first project we'll talk about is the Public Works drainage pipe replacement. I know you guys heard this a little bit ago. It's a replacement of the 84-inch stormwater pipe underneath the town common grounds. This project is currently in design phase, and phase, phase one of construction is expected to begin in late 2023. The build grant match, you've also heard about. No need to, to go too far into detail about this, but as I stated earlier, this does help provide the non-federal match for the project. Design is complete. The groundbreaking was last week, and the notice to proceed is anticipated for the 14th of August. Taking a look at the Dream Park Community Building, this project is currently in its design phase. The construction is expected to be presented to council in December of 2023, and construction is expected to begin in February of 2024. The design portion of the town common bulkhead is also funded with ARPA funding. The design is actually expected to be completed in the summer of 2024, and a probable cost is expected at the end of 2020, or excuse me, in January of 2024. So we got those dates a little bit stuck there, but design's expected to be completed middle of the year, and then we are, anticipated the probable cost of the project coming back at the beginning of the year. The greenfield terrace improvements, this project is currently in design. Final options are expected to be presented to council in September. This project is scheduled to begin construction in July of 2024. The total budget for the project is about $1 million. Only about half of that is funded with ARPA funding. In terms of the small business assistance, the city is expected to provide grants to eligible small businesses that have been affected by the pandemic within a qualified census tract. There are some restrictions in terms of the type of funding, or the type of business that can be, that can utilize this funding. Applications for any grants are being accepted and will be accepted through May 30th of 2024.
We have, we have done the first round. There's Deanna. We have done the first round and have received applications, and they're being reviewed right now.
In terms of employee premium pay, this project is completed. It's completed in last fiscal year. The city did provide premium pay for employees that were performing eligible essential work during the pandemic. And in addition to that Fourth Street Reconstruction project, this project is also complete for the purpose of ARPA. The scope of the project was reduced due to the, the cost and transferring the funding that was needed for the middle grant match. So the city only spent about $187,000 for this particular design. Any questions?
Good update. Brief update.
Yeah, that's what we have for the evening, ma'am and council. I'll be answering questions.
Any questions?
I have a quick question about the commercial sanitation service in the downtown area. You mentioned, Ann, that we would be hearing in the future about individual business services. Does this mean where someone would have their bin and they wouldn't have to take it to a dumpster? They would have individual service?
We will come back to you in September with a plan for how it is that if the, if the county, if the city were to begin.
To take on that, that, the, the collection of solid waste downtown, what that model would look like?
Okay.
We'll do that at the workshop in September.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
To adjourn.
Second?
All right, questions were made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All who's in favor say aye. Disposed say nay.
Commission passes 4-0.
We are adjourned.
Great, thank you all.
No, thank you.